What happens if?
Testing one, two, three. No, you're all set.
Are we good? All right, thank you. Appointments and hearings, we have none. Appointments of officials and personnel, we have none. What we do have is 4.1, discuss our vote on the one day liquor license for the Townsend BFW on April 3rd. This came in after our March 15th meeting. And before our next regular meeting, which is April 5th. And so because we were meeting today, I put this on here. So this is in conjunction with a baptism celebration to be held on April 3rd, 2022, with the sale hours from noon to 7:00 PM at the Townsend BFW. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the one day liquor license for the Townsend BFW for April 3rd, 2022.
From noon to 7:00.
From noon to 7:00 PM.
All right. Second?
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Judge Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Teller, yes. So let's get that signed, I guess.
Is it you spotting him out and chair, we have to sign or?
There are two spots, yes, sign in both places, please. That would, that's what helped this one up, that we approved them, didn't get mailed, because both of us missed the second. So moving on. Ross had made a request to open and close the annual town meeting warrant. So is there a motion to open the warrant?
I move that we open the annual town meeting warrant.
Second?
All right, discussion, Ross, I'm gonna have to.
And you may also want to vote to close it tonight. There was a request to add a warrant article that would require the treasurer collector to publish annually, if not more often, a list of people who are deficient or delinquent in their taxes. That list would be sent to everybody, all the boards and committees, and specifically the billing department that issue permits, with the understanding that someone would not be able to get a billing permit or any other permit or license if they are behind in their taxes. There's a state law that describes that. We could put in the warrant article language that says, well, if they're on a payment plan, then that's okay, because they're working on getting paid, make some exemptions. I think there are exemptions already built into the law that include like hunting licenses, marriage licenses can't be stopped if they're delinquent taxes.
Or dog licenses.
Or dog licenses.
Or whatever.
But it would apply to key things like bill, excuse me, billing permits or liquor licenses.
How did, how did this get, so now we're opening it to bring this in, the warrant has been called already. What are, what's, what's bringing this forward? Who's bringing this forward to try to put this on?
There is a, I guess, position, this format is as a resident is concerned that this ought to be something the town wants in place. It's, it's often done in other towns, and this is not something unique. There's a state law that provides how it is done. The warrant would essentially say to accept that state law, I think it's chapter 40, section 57, that I would have that for you. Actually, I think I put that in the SharePoint, like I have a copy in my office, if you'd like to see what.
Okay.
So it was a resident that brought this forward, and that's why, okay.
But it's after the fact that when it was supposed to.
Oh, yeah, the, right, so the warrant is closed. The alter, her alternative would be to get a citizen's petition and hopefully put it on a next town meeting. If she gets enough signatures, she could call a special town meeting. I don't know whether that's her intention or not. But since the warrant is not ready to go to print yet, selectmen could read through that, and selectmen could agree to sponsor that article, or, or not. So it's not really a citizen's petition at this stage, because it's been a request by a citizen to put that up.
For the board of selectmen to put it on the agenda.
And in my opinion, is, I mean, whatever we as a community can do to take and make sure that our tax revenues are coming in, and if there are people applying and getting permits to do things that are delinquent, well, instead of building an addition, maybe pay your taxes.
Right, I said there are some exemptions, and I would include exemptions for people that aren't payment plans. Means they've acknowledged it, and they're working with the treasurer to make their payments. But if somebody is ignoring, time it's paying taxes, this gives the town a little bit more clout without having to take it to court. I mean, that's something that would happen eventually. Like if they're denied the building for a billing permit or common vic permit, a license.
Or even a general license that we give, you know, so, yeah. I mean, I know when I came on the board over a year ago, there was 1.2 million dollars in back taxes that weren't being collected.
You know, probably about there right now.
And we're probably, I heard, we're maybe back up there. So, I mean, I'm all in favor of whatever it's going to take to get the revenue into the community. We need to do it. And however it is to make it for the citizen that has the petition, easy?
I, I would want to have, so this is us accepting a mass general law that has the wording in it. So, so if you wrote the warrant article, we could review it and vote on it next time. Is that correct?
Yes, I'm hoping on the 5th, your next meeting.
Right.
That I will have a finished warrant ready for you to vote the whole, whole process.
And at that point, we could say, no, we're not going to accept that one.
You could say that, or you could, would smith it. I mean, I was hoping that you voted that night, I'd send it essentially to the printers on the 6th. There is still some time to edit it further and, and adjust accordingly. So, so you have one more shot at changing the language after the 5th.
Okay.
But my goal would be to have it ready for you on the 5th. At this point, that's going to be a challenge, but we'll do that.
Right, it's Wednesday, it's not Tuesday. I, I would support putting the question on the ballot. If it's a, if it is an adoption of a mass general law, not us making up a rule.
And that's exactly how I feel. This is an adoption of a mass state law. And put it forward to the town for the town to vote on it in the town meeting. I think it's appropriate. So I have no problem with this.
Okay. All right, so is there a vote to add the for, an article to the warrants to adopt mass general law dealing with permits and?
Bad taxes.
Bad taxes.
So moved, second.
Any further discussion? All right, then, all those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Judge Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Teller, yes. All right.
Unless you have something else on your list, you can vote to close the warrants.
Oh, yes, we need to vote to close the warrant. Well, I, I do have one other thing that I would like to talk about. Let, let me talk about this with respect to the warrant, this. And I don't think this is necessarily something that I want to do for this year, but I think it's something that we should consider for next year, because we've already passed the point where people have pulled papers. But I think that we should consider offering stipends to elected, import, elected officials, because we haven't gotten people to come forward to run. And I think that there, I mean, we do for selectmen. Is that the only contested race? I need to check today.
Right now, that, that I know of.
When I ran, it was the only contested race. I don't think you were even contested. So, and you weren't contested.
No.
People aren't running for office, and we really need, I think we have three open planning board seats, and nobody pulled papers.
I think there's 12 open seats throughout the whole community.
Yep.
Yeah. And I, I, I'm looking for incentives for getting people besides, you know, that you're believe in volunteering for the good of your community. I mean, beyond that, I wonder if it would make a difference. So I'm not suggesting we put it on this time.
I think something should be talked about.
Unless we're gonna lower salaries. Otherwise, we don't really have room in the budget for this year.
Not this year. And I think you ought to go through some thought process as to what stipend level for each board or committee, maybe based upon the importance of their meetings, or how often they meet, or how much time is required sort of outside of the meeting.
Right.
And come up with a scale that makes sense. Then you got just work in the budget. I would, based on where the budget is now, I would ask you not to do it this year, but.
Can't come up with extra money for it?
He has no more room in his eraser right now.
I, I just wanted to throw that out there, that's all.
Well, Madam Chair, with all due respect, I, I, I understand that, you know, that would be an incentive. I, I agree with you that there needs to be some thought on this. I, I agree, also agree that there's probably not enough time right now. This would be something for next year. I personally would like to be able to fill the positions that we have open right now to be able to get those up and running, so that I personally would have some time to put some time and effort into something like that. So I believe next year is probably a good earmark for that.
Agreed.
I agree.
All right. So I have to say about the warrant. So is there a motion to close the warrant?
I move that we close the warrant for the annual town meeting.
Is there a second?
Second?
All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Judge Sexton Duranian, yes.
And Veronica Teller.
Thank you.
All right, on to 4.3, this is the added topic. This, it, it came to our attention just yesterday, I guess, that there are files missing from the Board of Selectmen's Office. Some are on ongoing litigation, including personnel files for former employees. So what I'm looking for is a motion to ask for, for, for us, the three of us, to ask Adam to send an inquiry letter to former employees as to where these records can be found.
Um, I'd like to know a little more about this before we vote on something. So how do you want to deal with this? Do we make a motion and then talk about it in discussion?
Let's make a motion and talk in discussion.
Okay. I move that we allow Town Council to send a letter to former employees in regards to missing files. Is that the gist of it?
I would say, instead of allow, direct. Direct Town Council.
So method?
I'll second that.
Send a letter.
Direct him to send a letter.
To former employees. Inquiring as to where.
This is where they.
And to, excuse me, and to advise former employees that get legally bound to turn over these documents, or something like that.
Well, if they do have them, I would think that would be an issue anyway, that they shouldn't be out of the office anyway.
Correct, but.
But we gotta vote on this before we discuss.
Well, we're discussing the motion, I mean, the intent is to recover documents that we believe are missing.
Or to be directed to the hiding place, the place where they would be.
The racers would come back?
To where they would expect them to be.
I'll discuss it. I'd like to hear more of what we're talking about.
I, I guess I'm being.
Very vague.
A bleak. But in the process of looking for a file that we determined was missing, the, the discovery was made that there were other files that were also not able to be found in the selectmen's office.
And they were, some were personnel files, some were pending litigation?
Yeah.
That's very concerning.
So, yeah, which is why I'm requesting the motion.
Yeah, if, if there are personnel files that are not in the proper place, and there are files or packets of litigation that's ongoing, or even, even if they're closed out, they still need to be available in this building to have the records.
I did talk to Town Council this morning, and just told that records do go missing in town offices. Is basically what he said. And so if I had a note that is not unusual, especially when it has been turned over. And so if I had a vote of the board, that Town Council could make the request.
Got it.
I, I think this is part of the, the board doing due diligence to protect and preserve constitutional or key records. Without making an effort to recover them, I mean, making an effort to recover them, I think it's part of being of due diligence.
That we know that there is a problem, and we do nothing about it, two, three years down the road, it could come back and say, well, why didn't you do anything? And I don't think that's the way we should do it. If there's an issue, I think we need to, we need to take and do whatever and hold whoever has them for any reason accountable.
I feel that we need to start an investigation on this.
I was, what that?
That's the, I think the first step is to
Ask.
Ask to have any potential records that someone might have returned, then.
Can we, while we're having this discussion right now, then, we'll request that. And if they get back the answer that we don't know nothing about it, let's authorize now, so we don't have to go back and hash, hash this all out later, then we start an investigation. However, we want to do it, an independent law firm, or use our law firm, but I think it's something we should talk about, and just get it done, and just move on.
Well. I, I would suggest doing the first step was ask to have, if any records are out there, to have them returned. And then, hey, so what if you hear from there, we could figure out the next steps. I mean, some of this may be this Town Council commented. This is not unusual in, in other towns as well as here. Let's just, let's see what the first step is.
Can we, well, I guess, do we know which file, we can't discuss which files they are. Are they pertinent to anything that we know of, or how do we? So I, I'm blind at this, so I mean, I don't, so if there's an issue with files missing, I'd like to know a little more about what files, whose files, what are we doing, and where we're going, and that would set my.
Files. Contents of a current employee's personnel files. Two personnel files of former employees with, involved with litigation against the town. And.
I don't think it impacts current events or future events at the moment. But it's, it's information that should not be out of the town's control, or out of, out of, and where they can, where confidentiality may not be observed if they're not returned.
Now, if you just said two former employees, one present employee, their files are missing, that's alarming. That's above and beyond alarming. That we need to take just whoever the ex-employees are, or whoever the present employee. If that name ever gets out there, lost, well, they'd be the first ones to come after us, and why are we protecting them? Why is that out there?
And that's why this is the first step to.
But that's why I think we need to just not come back in a week, or two weeks, or three weeks, and say, okay, we didn't get anywhere. Let's get the ball rolling. If we don't get the ad, if Adam, whoever he directs, doesn't get the answer he needs from the employees he sends to instantly, we've taken a vote to, I, I support what Chad says. We need to do a full-blown investigation.
So.
Can we add to the motion? May I make an amendment to the motion?
Sure.
To add?
We don't have a second on the motion yet, anyway.
Okay. So to, to add to the motion to say if we don't get that information, then we start a, an investigation immediately?
Um. Move to direct Town Council, send a letter to former employees as to where these files may be found, and to, to advise that they're legally bound to return.
If, if.
If in there.
If they, they're not returned, then we need to start a, an investigation.
No, I, I, and maybe I'm wrong in my saying. But last summer, I, I know there was some talk here in Town Hall that there was some issues with files. I think one office, they felt was compromised. Was anything ever done with that?
There were files that were, were taken out, and they were boxed and sealed and placed in the vault.
But I think that was because, if I'm not mistaken, one of them days that a certain person was here, said that there were things taken.
Police report about that.
Is there, that's what I'm getting at, is.
At 11:40.
Has, was there ever any outcome of that? What was the investigation? Did they do anything? Find anything?
You, we could get the police report, but I, I did talk to the chief about that this morning, and he said that he could not determine that the, that the that it had been tampered with, that there had been any tampering with it. You know, or whether it was just broken, and there was no way of knowing whether or not. And it was felt that there was nothing missed.
I'd go with what Chad says. If we don't get what the answer, start a, an investigation.
Yeah, I mean, it may very well be that the former employees don't have or didn't take those records. And it could be elsewhere, but we ought to make efforts to try to recover.
We need to find them. Yes, I agree, that's.
So I'll second your.
And so we are including the addendum, it's not found, then starting an investigation, okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Judge Sexton Duranian, yes.
All right, so our work session, discussion of, I, I wrote here, discussion of process for admin assistant to D O S P A new hire. I think what I meant by that is, let's discuss that and then determine whether we're appointing tonight, or appointing on Tuesday, or how we want to go for it. So we had two candidates, candidate one at four o'clock, candidate two at five o'clock. So I guess I'd just like to hear, I know, Joe, you were.
I'm gonna recuse myself, right?
Yeah, you weren't involved in the interview.
So should I just step out of the room? Does it matter?
Okay, I don't think it does.
Okay, so Joe is refusing. If you're not participating in the meeting, could you please mute yourself if you're not actively speaking? Thank you. All right, so, thoughts?
My thought is. My thought is.
Oh, Ross is laughing over here.
No, no.
I guess, what process should we use?
That's why.
Do we just want to say, who do you pick and why? Or do you, I mean, that might be, do you want candidate one or candidate two?
Well, I can explain to you the, what, what I think, what criterias that we were judging on and go from there. As far as what candidate fits.
All right.
With whatever that we was, you know, do you want to start, Ross?
No, I was hoping you would.
No, okay.
I mean, I would say that we interviewed, I think, two very good candidates.
I would agree.
I was laughing because this is actually a somewhat difficult decision from my perspective, because I think that they both could have done a job and would potentially be a good fit. But why don't you, do you want to go through some of your selection criteria, then maybe?
Well, I, I would think these people said. Right. My original thoughts were not only for that particular position, but the other, other duties that we are morphing into, because there's a lot of digitization that we're looking at. There's a lot of web-based programming that we're looking at. There's a lot of systems that need to change. So I was looking at somebody who was, had a lot of strength in, on the, on the cyber and software side, somebody that would be able to, to work not only with Microsoft, the Word, or Office, and be able to manipulate those particular programs, but also help interface with our webpage and electronic calendaring, being able to set up meetings, being able to disseminate information to department heads in a much more efficient way than pieces of paper in a mailbox downstairs by the, by the town clerk's office. The, the candidates, I agree, were very, very strong in regards to that. I also wanted somebody who did have some knowledge of formal processes, whether it be with law processes or office processes. I think that was very important to me. And the third most important criteria was confidentiality. What's being discussed or what is being worked on needs to remain in this particular office. And that individual works very closely with the town administrator, who also works very closely with the select board. So that position is privy to a lot of important information that needs to remain in the office until it's ready to be disseminated and into the public. So that was kind of my criteria that I was looking at.
I was looking for someone who had a background in municipal procedures, I guess, familiarity with the law, being able to MGL, being able to kind of hit the ground running in that area, having some idea of how a town hall works. In addition to, I wasn't looking as much on the electronic calendaring and dissemination of information side. I wasn't, I was looking more on that follow-up side, the minute side, you know, that sort of thing.
It traits that, that I think, in addition to everything that you've said, familiar with master law and the ability to follow process and procedures, understanding public records issues, open meeting issues, workers' comp, and recognizing the difference between workers' comp and injured on duty based upon whether it be town hall employees or police and fire. And the potential to, to dig in and to grow into this position. I think both candidates touched more or less on everything, but one of them, I think, was strongest all the way around. So if we're going to put names to position, person one versus two, I recommend, based on what I heard, Sabrina Moore.
I will second that.
I will third that.
And I'll sit this one out.
All right, so, well, Ben, we are unanimous. So process going forward then?
I think we ought to make it pending reference checks. Query and pre-employment physical. So I guess, assuming the reference checks passed and we go into the query and pre-employment physical stage. Next step is references.
All right, so. Let's take references. Are we going to prepare an offer letter after the references? Is that the process that we should go to? So references, offer letter? This is 40 hours, correct? And we're grading. Step.
Step two.
Step two. And so we'll check the references, prepare the offer letter, and make the appointment on Tuesday? Does that sound right? Chad?
What is the, the title?
Administrative assistant to the selectmen's office, board of selectmen and the TA. What do they call it on the job description? Selectman administrative assistants. Did I ever send you, Ross, the webmaster posting and description? I haven't done that, have I?
If you'd like, I will call both candidates in the morning.
Okay, that would be great.
Does anybody want to call someone for references besides myself? She's going to send me their phone numbers tomorrow. We've got three of her managers from Swicker and Associates.
All right. Well, if you want to send me, you know, phone numbers when you get them, I could call all three if you want. And if she has emails, that would be helpful too, in case I can't get them on the phone. Thank you very much. Our next meeting is, our next, oh, well, our next regular meeting, regular board of selectmen meeting is on the 5th at 6:00 PM. The, that will be posted probably end of the day tomorrow, but Friday, by Friday at noon. At the very least, I'm still adding things to that. I have another thing, Ross, that I'll send you, where you can look and see what I updated. It's a fairly long meeting, so just know that. We also have two meetings. One on Saturday and one on Monday.
You missed number 5.1 manager.
Discussion of process for admin assistant to BOSTA new hire. Didn't we just do that?
Yeah.
That's BOSTA.
All right. Unless you want to talk more about the town administrator hiring process, because she's got three interviews set up.
No, no, this was for the administrative assistants. That was for who we just did. So we do have interviews set up for Saturday morning at 9:00 AM and 11:00 AM. They are in-person only. They're open meetings, but they are in-person only. And the second should be posted already, I believe, for Saturday meetings. Monday, I haven't posted yet. That I'll put up tomorrow. And that's at 6:00 PM with the third candidate for the
Town administrator.
Town administrator. And the recordings for those will be posted after all three interviews are completed. So we are recording the interviews.
Yes, my question was, are we going to have a special format that we're going to use on Saturday and Monday?
Oh, you want to talk about that?
That's what I was getting at, Madam.
We can talk about that. We can kind of nudge it into that. So we have the questions that we used prior. Do we want to generate questions? I would say we use those. We each pick three of them that we want to do, and then we each come up with, I have a couple other questions that I would like to ask.
There's a document that is in our SharePoint, and if you want me to pick through it and find it and then resend it to you guys that we use, that there were questions from you, questions from you, and questions from me.
Right.
I thought that we would just use that same document, and then you could either use those questions or put in whatever we wanted.
Same idea, was that document that we used, only I have additional.
Yeah, so I can, what I'll do is I'll, I'll, I'll look through the SharePoint, find that document, and I'll resend it to the both of you.
Can I ask, Ross, when we did the interviews with you, the questions, did you feel we should be adding something to that or asking any different?
They're awful questions.
Ross says, just bring coin.
Don't forget, we still have to sign that warrant.
You haven't signed off yet.
Do we don't sign the warrant? Oh, I thought the questions were very good. And I've been thinking about questions that I might suggest you ask as well.
Okay.
Okay.
If I can get myself organized between now and Saturday, I will send them to you.
Okay, awesome. Because I like that format we did. We each had one on one. I thought it worked. I thought it worked out very well.
And I would like to ask the same questions.
Sounds good to Chad. You'll find that in that infamous SharePoint that I do so well with.
Well, you got your other ones, right?
I did, I did.
January, June, July 29th. Try, start there. And if it's not there back up again.
I think I created a folder, and I think that I, I, this, I stopped sharing on it. So the folder is still there. It's just, it can't be seen. So I just need to open it back up again, I think, if I remember correctly, but I gotta.
Appreciate that. All right, that's what I wanted to ask. Okay, thank you.
So that sounds good. Do I bring coffee and donuts or something?
You know, I think we should. I'll make some money to it if you like.
Or no.
I mean, if we're going to be here at nine, I'm going to get here probably quarter of, get some coffee, some donuts. Are you going to be here, Ross?
I can be here Monday night, but wasn't planning to be here Saturday.
That's okay. We can handle this.
We're becoming experts.
No, I never turn down coffee myself.
Me neither.
See, if you have a stipend, it'd be easier to do that.
A muffin or two would be all right, too.
And all worked good. Okay, forget muffins.
No, no, I'm not. I'm not. We'll see.
I moved that re-adjourn.
Can I have a 30-second update for you?
Yes, yes.
I'll go into more detail next week. We've got the water department hybrid fusion. We're going to make that available to town hall employees. I've worked on process procedures. Bruce Hammond's already confirmed that everybody's already covered on insurance, so that'll be pretty easy. Good. We had a very good meeting with the insurance advisory committee, consisting theoretically of union reps from all five unions, as well as I invited all other employees that are taking the town's health insurance. By agreeing to adding a $250 deductible, $750 deductible per family, we took the six and a half percent increase and brought it down to 0.6% by switching to the Blue Cross Blue Shield dental plan, which actually costs less than the previous one.
Good.
And that's 100% important paid. And by agreeing to offer employees vision care, which employees pay for, we lowered it to 0% increase on our health insurance.
Oh, it's zero? I thought it was 0.6.
It was, but by adding the dental and the vision, at no cost.
Well done, well done.
Zero cost, 0% increase. That saves the employees a little bit of money out of their pockets. They'll pay a little bit more in the deductible.
Right.
But there are flexible spending plans and other plans that can help mitigate that. No one likes increasing the cost to anybody, the employees, but it's a way to minimize their increase and the town's.
Right.
Good job.
Very good news.
That's great. That's great news.
The the budget deficit, after I've found some numbers that I hadn't encountered in the right place, is standing as of this morning at $174,000 deficit. That's above what our tax levied limit is. And we're working, I've got a couple plans on how we bring that down. In the meantime, the election warrant has been printed, and I had them put in a Prop 2.5 override, asking for $350,000. With any luck, we won't need that, either because we'll get it down to zero, or we might need some stabilization instead. But you will get to vote on that warrant next Tuesday. As well as hopefully vote on the.
What are traces? What are, what are, what are the traces? Say, if we can't knock this 170. I, I'd just hate to see going to the town, your Prop 2.5 override. I know it's, it's small money for every household. However, at this point.
It's, well, we've taken things out, trying to minimize that tax impact, such as, you know, the Community Preservation Act, which I think is beneficial to the town long-term, that's been taken out. The stormwater management plan, that is something the town should be doing. And, okay, providing funds for that's been taken out. So we've made other cuts.
Funding of the pavement management plan.
Pavement management plan that's supposed to be done. So we've taken things out. There's a few things more that we might be able to twist. So I'm just, this is an FYI where it is. Wednesday night, the 20th, 7 o'clock, we're planning to have in the Great Hall, a pre-town meeting preparation for residents to come in, ask questions, or for us to explain what the budget is, what's in the warrant. Select board may want to think about how, what, they want to say something as a preference to that meet. Such as, we've tried really hard to minimize these increases. There's some programs that are not being done. So this is not a budget that has a lot of thrills. It's been cut. But anyway, so you might want to be thinking about what you want to say on the 20th. We've hired an extremely talented gentleman to be our webmaster. He's also interested in getting exposed more to public administration, and I'd like to help him in that sense, as well as help the town by employing him as a intern working for the town minister. He could do some projects that, you know, need some research. He could do a lot of sort of one-offs that I might assign to him.
What kind of money?
We agreed to.
1436.
1436.
That's the first step on step A. I think it's step five. It's the first one, I have it written down here somewhere, the over, that's minimum wage. So we have five steps right now. There are four steps.
How many hours a week?
It would be minimal. A couple hours a week here and there. That's short-term projects.
Not like 20 or 30 hours. Not like a twenty or thirty hour.
No, so. Okay, he's a junior in high school, so he's got.
Yeah, got to go to school still.
Got to go to school still. Limited hours, project-specific. We have some, a line item that has some room to pay for it this year. And it stops theoretically when I stop, but the new town administrator and the board might want to have him continue. That's up to.
It, it's paid out of the temporary budget.
Right.
In the board of selectmen's line items for FY twenty-two. It's not necessarily there for FY twenty-three. So it would only be till July first.
Right. We'll see how it works and.
We need to take a hold on that.
If you'd like to, otherwise, I'm just willing, you know, I'm doing it and you can tell me.
I'm okay with that. I'm good with that.
He's already, we've already accepted him as the webmaster, so it's just additional tasks.
Yeah.
So speaking of webmaster, I'm, I'm going to make some sort of flyer for that, for the community day. The community warrant discussion on the twentieth. And I have to get to Harrison's tasks and I'll give him back to post under news and announcements for things to get him going. And hopefully tomorrow I'll have him up and running.
Thank you.
That's it. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn at seven oh one P M.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
George Shank, yes.
Chad Sack, Stendrini, yes.
Dan Burn, he tells us.